We reconvene our meeting to closed session. Thank you all for coming tonight. It's great to see you all come out in your bright, vibrant colors. I love it. So, in closed session, we did, on a motion of trustee Orloff and a second by trustee Farrell, the board voted five to zero to direct the superintendent to notify a certificated administrator that she will be released from her administrative assignment and be released to a non-administrative position for the 2015-2016 years within the scope of her credential. And then, in one motion, a motion by-
We can't hear you, sorry.
Can you hear now? Sorry about that. Okay. In one motion, on a motion by trustee Orloff and a second by trustee Farrell, the board voted four to one to non-reelect two probationary certificated employees and direct the superintendent to notify them. Trustee Brown voted no, trustee Farrell voted yes, trustee Delarty voted yes, trustee Orloff voted yes, and trustee Volchmuth voted yes. Oh, sorry. We're going to see it for flagellates.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment. Please note that the meeting is recorded and livestreamed to www.crpusd.org. Members of the public are entitled to speak on matters not on the agenda at this time. Please state your name and address and keep your comments concise, brief, and limited to five minutes or less. A maximum of twenty minutes is allotted to each subject not appearing on the agenda. The Brown Act restricts the board from considering any item not appearing on the proposed agenda or the posted agenda. Members of the public are entitled to speak to any item on the agenda either immediately after the item is called by the board president or following background information provided related to the item at the board president's discretion. Each person is entitled to speak on any agenda item only once at the meeting. All the board members may seek additional information, participation, and debate on any item before the board shall be limited to two members of the board. Please fill out a comment card which will be given to the board president indicating the item you wish to address. Comments are limited to five minutes per individual and twenty minutes per item. So, I'd like to call up Christina Grace.
Honey. What was in the peanut gathering?
You're not used to that, I'm sorry.
Thank you for your time. I'm Christina Grace, and I'd like to address our district's culture. I've taught for fourteen years, ten years in this district, and four or five at Rancho. I teach English, not math, and numbers are not my thing. Doing EOD. I love my students. They aren't always the easiest, and yet, if you talk to Adam and I rarely write referrals. I credit this to the culture I set up in my classes. I take the first week, and we analyze the word "respect." The students are great when I ask, "What does respect look like?" They have all the right answers. Raise your hand, you know, come to school on time, sit, don't talk while others are talking. Inevitably, they are, but we keep practicing. However, when I ask, "How do you get respect? And what does it feel like?", most are silent. And then, some say, "Through fear and power." So, we discuss this every role play the whole first week, how to find, how to achieve, and how to give respect. The outcome usually shows that respect stems from trust, and that trust is always a choice. Throughout the year, I refer to this trust and remind them, "We are a team heading for success, and I can't do this without them." Obviously, I don't catch all of the students, but I also don't have any mutiny in my classes. My students know I will do my best by them. I say this not to brag, although I do like to think I'm awesome, but rather, to advise you of the same thing. Our district needs new culture, filled and based on respect. In essence, we need to choose to trust. Around five years ago, I was diagnosed and treating my thyroid cancer. Shortly after my return, we were asked to take a pay cut and pay for medical insurance to help with the financial crisis. Like I said, I'd just returned from months of medical leave, and remembered how Barbara had called to check on me. She didn't just, she checked on me to see that I was healing. She checked on me to make sure that I was getting the medical leave that I needed, and she told me over and over again, "Don't worry about being back in the classroom, Christina, just heal." I remembered being a part of a team after that call. Rather than having to fight for my medical leave, I was, felt like I was treated like a person. So, I agreed to the pay cut. With this agreement, I had to drop my three-year-old down to three days of preschool and rely on my parents' and laws to take care of my two kids two days a week. My house had completely depreciated, and my nine-to-six Toyota had died. I took car loans and guilt about providing for my kids, all because we were a team, and it was worth it. I've heard rumors that cut wasn't necessary, and I choose to trust that if that was the case, my team would have restored my pay earlier. As it is, you did. You restored my pay this year, to what I was earning in '09, and I thank you for that, but full benefits were not restored. And I thought, "It's okay, we're still a team. We can only do so much, so little time. Maybe next year." This year was dedicated to giving a raise to Rob and Elizabeth, which is good. We need competitive salaries to keep good leadership. My point and my advice, and what I need for you really to hear, is right now, you have so much power and control to create a fabulous team culture in this district. We are quickly heading to the us versus them. Not all of us are there yet. Some of us still think we can still be a team. If you continue on the path with the us versus them, if we continue on that path, though, we can't succeed. We need you, and like it or not, you need us. Otherwise, everything crumbles, just like if I treat my class like this. And trust me, the us you need is the us that feels valued, that feels like working for you adds to our self-worth, just like I have to provide for my students. You know what respect looks like. We know what respect looks like. Now, we need to feel it. Choose to trust us. Choose to make us a team. Make us trust that you're planning for us. Show us that you think we are worth something. Acknowledge that the time I sacrifice away from my family seems worthwhile. Eliminate the yearly trouble for our cost of living adjustment. I work hard. We all work hard. And by "we," I mean "we." I do my best, but I'm only one part of this team. Take my advice. Change the culture. Please. Thank you for your time.
How you doing? My name's Josh Cutler. I live at 1512 Griffin Way. I'm actually up here, as you can see, as a teacher, but I'm also up here as a parent. So, I just remember that I had a child in second grade at Evergreen and a future child that was just born on the way coming to our district. I want to come up here to talk to you about a few things. Last time I talked in front of the board was they were talking about getting rid of class side reduction for K3, and that was the last time I spoke on not to do it. Well, of course, it happened. I'm one of those teachers that have worked eleven years, been laid off, been through school closure. I had to go to another district because there was no job for me, because they increased. So, I've been through all that. You know, everyone's talked about their, oh, you know, that kind of thing. I've done all that. So, it's funny that I'm standing up here today. I never thought in a million years I'd be coming up here today to talk about asking for money, because we always talked about how are we going to save money? And so, now, we're sitting up here in a position where people are saying, you know, the financial strain may be there in some ways or another, but we're up here now, and it's a different culture, what we're talking about. People have gotten raises. We're getting programs. We're doing these things. We're working together. I developed that pay cut, that 2% pay cut and paying more of the benefits. My wife is a teacher too in the district. We had a short sale on our house. We had to change, of course, you know, our two-year-old. We had to do all those kinds of things, you know, things that we had to do, and it happened. I mean, that's, what's done is done. As a teacher, I'm going to try to give you an analogy to see if this makes sense. As a teacher, we've been getting a lot of new things. And what I mean by that is, we have getting new assessments, Common Core, progress monitoring, new programs like Everyday Math, Sync Solutions, all this stuff's come into us, you know, stuff to help get our kids ready. We have no excuses. We do it, even though sometimes I look at it going, "Oh, my gosh, how am I going to make this work?"" So, what I say to you is, and maybe hard to figure out how to get a raise to everyone, but you should make it work like we make it work. It's not going to be easy. No one ever says it's going to be easy. So, when you give us all this stuff to say, you know, "This is what we need to work on", and I'm looking at all this stuff, and I'm shredding water trying to do it, I make it work. So, now, it's your turn. Make it work. We need it. I mean, you can do it. If we can do it, all this stuff, and work together and do that, then you can do it too. So, it's a conversation we all need to have, you guys need to have, and those things. You know, I understand propositions have passed, bonds have passed, measures have passed. I get that. I get you can't spend certain monies on certain things, but when those things pass, that frees up money. I may just teach kindergarten, and I might not have an economics degree, but I know that money moves around to different places, so money can go other places. I've been in this district long enough now to understand that. And you've got to remember, all those propositions and things like that that passed, we all helped. We wanted as much as you. We were on the same page. So, when thinking about those kinds of things, when we get the raise that we're going to get, personally, this is personal, I'm not speaking for everyone here, I spend a lot of money in the classroom, because I want what's best for my kids, and sometimes I need to spend my own money. So, when I do get that raise, it's going to be paying me back for the money that I'm spending in the classroom. And I can't speak, I can't say everyone does that, and that's what, you know, that's their own, I'm not going to tell you what I, you know, they're going to tell you what they're spending money on, but I do. I spend quite a bit. I just did my taxes this weekend, and I'm like, "Oh, my gosh, really?"" But, I did it, and I continue to do it. So, yes, that's where my raise is going to go, is going to pay for that, because that's what's best for the kids. And just to leave you on one more note, I was talking to a coworker of mine. Just as I mentioned before, you count on us to meet to the Common Core and do all these things for our students, and we're counting on you to treat us justly. Thank you.
So, following Josh, I'm speaking to programs, oh, I'm Carly Hart. I live at 679 Country Club, and I too am a parent and a taxpayer and a teacher in the district for eleven years. Lexia, Dreambox, Endgrade, Sync Solution Pacing Guides, Sync Solution Benchmark Exams, Criterion Writing, CAM Consulting, Walk to Read, Designated Language Arts and Math Time, Preparation for Teachers Moved to the Afternoon Only, Everyday Math, Lake Elsinore Benchmarking, The Elimination of Lake Elsinore Benchmarking, Eliminate, Medallions, The Learning Center Model, Losing One-on-One AIDS for Students with Special Needs, Close Reading, iPads for Teachers, Chromebooks for Students, Google Docs, Dibbles, Daze, kind of leaves us in the daze. These are the programs and changes seen in just the elementary schools under the current administration, in addition to learning the new Common Core State standards, in addition to the other programs previously in place. Programs which we have not been properly trained to use, programs which we do not have the time or tools to learn during our contract day, programs which we are to use with our students, so we learn them anyway, on our own time, programs which the district is paying for but not utilizing, programs which teachers did not have the professional opinions asked as to whether they were useful, kid-friendly, teacher-friendly, or if they support the Common Core State standards. A few weeks back, at a district-wide curriculum meeting regarding Sync Solutions pacing and benchmarking, a teacher who has been in the profession for over twenty years and is highly regarded admitted feeling defeat and a sense of failure at every turn. This conversation quickly turned to a common theme. We've all felt it when facing our students and telling them that, yes, we have to do yet another sync test. The students are working so hard, they know the material, they pass the teacher-created practice test with flying colors, they feel confident and proud. Then, they take the sync test. These are poorly formatted and not clearly reflective of the material we've taught them using the curriculum that we've scraped together. And then, they see the end result, low basic. Hands fly up. What does this mean? Did I fail? Will this fall on my report card? Are my parents going to see this? Thirty pairs of nine-year-old tear-rimmed eyes are gazing up at us with all the wind taken out of their sails. And yes, we have to take another one next week. We send the kids out to recess, turn to our teaching partners, and sigh once again, "This is all just too much." Teaching is hard. There's not one educator who went into this field thinking otherwise. However, the benefits can carry us through the challenges. The light old moment for the student who struggles, a lesson so engaging that kids are still talking about it on their way out the door, a novel so touching, they beg you to ditch the rest of your plans for the day and just read to them. A parent who thanks you for the best year their child has had yet, the returning student who tells you it was your belief in them that turned them around, and now they want to be a teacher too. These joys are getting fewer and farther between due to the increased demands on teachers. Expectations are rising, morale is dropping, education is suffering, student happiness is dwindling. Let's get back to the way of teaching we all know how to teach. The district is filled with talented teachers, teachers who teach because they believe in the power of learning. Programs don't teach kids. Teachers teach kids.
Hi. My name's Diane Scott, 417 Mountain View Avenue, Santa Rosa. I've been teaching in this district for twenty-two years. I taught first and second grade for thirteen years, and then moved to middle school, and I've been teaching sixth, seventh, and eighth grade for nine years. I commend Dr. Haley and Dr. Kaufman for implementing the ad campaign to highlight our district for what it is. We have dedicated, top-quality professional educators who care about the students of Katati Rudder Park and take pride in doing their best, even in difficult times with limited funds. The ad campaign is just what we need to get the word out that we are the best district in Sonoma County, and that by sending your child to our schools, they will receive a quality education. I also commend our administration for encouraging dialogue between teachers and administrators. The education summit meetings are a new thing for our district. It is here that Dr. Haley emphasized, "We are a team." Our understanding was that these education summit meetings were to provide us as teachers and as the implementers of programs, an opportunity to be part of the process to make successful decisions for our students, our schools, and our district. I am hopeful that there has been some progress in changing the way decisions are made, and it seems as if there is recognition of the importance of including teacher input before the adoption and implementation of new programs and policies. I hope this team effort will continue in future planning and decision-making. I strongly believe in the team concept Dr. Haley has promoted. I have faith that you, as our board, will do the right thing and give teachers a long-awaited, well-deserved salary increase. In 2008, we agreed in good faith to a 2% cut in salary, an increase in our out-of-pocket medical expenses, and a shortened school year. We did our part as part of the team. It wasn't easy for me and my family. When I received a salary cut, my family was forced to change our spending habits and had to make sacrifices that are still in place today. I hope you remember the sacrifices we as teachers have made in order for our district to grow and become what it is today. While the 2% cut from 2008 was finally restored six years later in 2014, there still has been no increase in salaries since 2008, not even to account for the rise in the cost of living. We keep hearing, "We are a team," but if that's true, then we are long overdue to be recognized for our contribution to it. The T in team stands for teachers. Without our hard work and expertise, this team wouldn't be successful. We have been promised by you and Dr. Haley that we would receive a raise. We have been tirelessly working with this in mind. Instead of putting extra effort into this team, perhaps I should focus on creating more income for myself in other ways and stop putting in all the extra hours that I do. I'm referring to the numerous hours spent before and after paid hours doing things like grading papers and projects, lesson planning, and purchasing and gathering supplies for my classroom. When I first started teaching, I didn't have the internet to help me decide which school district to apply to. New teacher graduates can and will search for the best districts based on reputation and salary. We need to be cutting-edge, not only in services offered, but also in compensation for a job well-done. We need to recruit and retain the best of the best. I hope you see the value teachers bring to this district and find a way to budget for your greatest asset, the hard-working professional educators of the Katati Rudder Park Unified School District. And lastly, thanks for your time. You are an important part of our team. I know that you have jobs outside of being board members, and that your job as a board member is not an easy one. Please take the time to research this issue, and I welcome you to visit my classroom and email me with any questions. Thank you.
My name is Laurel Iona. I live at 2807 McGowan, San Carlos. As some of you know, I have spent my entire adult working life at Rancho Katati High School. In my tenure as an English teacher there, I have fallen in love, married, given birth to two children, and raised them to adulthood, fought a life-threatening battle with breast cancer, and buried two parents. I have been diligent, loyal, worked hard in good faith and with good heart. I am as close to a company man as this district has had, and now, after forty-one years of faithful service, I am retiring with the very same salary I earned back in 2008. In all my years with the district, I have only spoken to the board once before in support of classroom aides. So, I do not come here lightly or without conviction, and more importantly, I do not speak for myself. I cannot benefit from any decisions made as a result of these sessions. I have worked under fifteen principals, twenty-seven assistant principals, eight superintendents, three interim superintendents, and I have seen countless educational programs, trends, fads, theories, consultants, and legislation come in and out of vogue. And as a result, I have come to see and believe that regardless of programs, theories, and consultants, classroom teachers are any district's most valuable resource. I have trained many enthusiastic student teachers and through BISA mentored many strong first and second-year colleagues, only to sadly see them take jobs in other districts offering higher pay. So, those of us who have stayed are truly the bedrock of this district. When the winds shift at the top, we have stood steadfast and committed, putting education of the youth of our community first, showing clearly that teachers are your most valuable resource. We want good teachers, and we want them to stay. I know you understand that good salaries are needed to attract good talent, and this thinking applies to talent at every level of the educational ladder. A successful school is a balanced school, seasoned, experienced veterans teamed with the optimism, energy, and passion of those new to our profession. New teachers need to know that they too have secure futures in a job that allows them to dream, and all teachers need salaries that allow them to stay ahead of the cost of living in a very expensive county. Teachers are your most valuable resource. They work in good faith, day in and day out. They have committed themselves to a noble pursuit. Plan for them, honor them, show them that you know they are your most valuable resource. Thank you.
Lady Lowery, 6191, San Carlos, Rudder Park. I'm going to loud read this. This is what I want you to hear. This is why these people came. They have the positive tone, and I'll say this, this will be in my file. I'm really proud of what I'm hearing from all these people. This is what you need to know. This isn't head-banging bargaining. This is the heart and the soul of this school district. You know, today I had the pleasure, and we're going to tell you about it later, I'm sure, but we have Unity Week. Well, we have Unity Night here, and these teachers are unified, and once- And once in a while, we have to kind of show you that it's not just the big mouths. But these are the people. They're speaking from their heart about whatever it is. And I think you know what it is. And we don't need to talk about Item 12-1. We need to talk about how we're going to maintain these great people who are doing all the things that they've described. And the time is near. And you know, I've said to you again and again, you promised the raise. But if we have to go to the head-to-head bargaining, you need to give us a raise. Listen to them, not me. Think about what needs to be done. Do the right thing. Thank you.
Maha, did you want to speak now, or did you want to speak? Maha Rikoradi.
Maha Rikoradi, 1197, Yellow Circle, Roner Park. I'm also the president of the Roner Park Kattati Educators Association. We are here to ask the board and the district to provide raises for our members. Who are our members? We are teachers, counselors, nurses, and psychologists. We hold many different positions, but we are all educators. In essence, you couldn't call these buildings a school without us. And, as our shirts proudly state, "We educate." What happens when the cost of living goes up and you don't have a raise for seven and a half years and take 5.29% in cuts over three of those years? Our educators are hard-working, but they can't afford to buy a home. Many of them work a second job. They are dedicated, but they can't afford the cost of childcare. That's right. People who take care of other people's kids all day have a hard time caring for their own. They are innovative, but they can't afford to retire. This must change, and we must be better compensated for the work we do. Recently, some of our board members' friends and allies began posting our salary schedule and links to the website, Transparent California, on Facebook in an effort to prove that educators make a lot of money. Well, we do have great benefits, and they only exist for you on the board to also enjoy because decades ago, our members with foresight like Lady Lowery didn't take a raise and instead took that money and set up a trust to manage their healthcare benefits for this district and protect them for the future. Later, they joined CBT, where we still purchase our benefits today. Sites like Transparent California list our benefits as part of our salary. Well, we've got news for you. People can't eat their benefits or pay their bills with them. In addition, without the guarantee of great benefits, the public sector, including education, would be devoid of people to employ. Have the board members stayed our salary schedule? There are many places that teachers can top out, especially if they don't further their education. In order to move to the last column, educators have to earn over 75 units past their bachelor's degree. That's a lot more education than a lot of working professionals have. Personally, I made more about 15 years ago working at State Farm Insurance with just a bachelor's degree than I do today, all those years later. Oh, and by the way, I also had great benefits working at State Farm Insurance. Board members, the budget is improving, and Governor Brown projects even more money will come into education this May. In 2015-16, there will be an increase in school funding for the state of $4 billion, or 8.7%. Districts will also receive a COLA of 1.58%. And according to the California Teachers Association, there is no longer any realistic doubt about the implementation of the Local Control Funding Formula and the likelihood of your funding. The Prop 98 guarantee of 40% of the state's budget is going to education is fully funded, and all deferrals have now been repaid, and cash flow problems should be eased almost completely, according to the CTA. Additionally, Governor Brown has allocated $1.1 billion more for Common Core implementation and $100 million more to support Internet connectivity for the Espa. Simply put, the economy is improving and education is finally getting the funding it deserves. Through the Local Control Funding Formula, districts like ours can direct money to toward salaries to attract and retain great educators. It's time for our great educators to get a raise. Hey, school board, here's an idea. Let's give our educators a raise and pay them the salaries that they deserve. Thank you.
Jill Finnerby. Hi, I'm Jill Finnerby, 4828 Parkville Drive, Santa Rosa. I've been in the district for about 15 years, and I've been teaching sixth and seventh grade English and ELD at Lawrence Jones Middle School. For several years, I've been involved in developing and planning the English Language Arts Assessments for the middle school. Currently, I'm a course planner for SINK Solutions, so that's what I wanted to talk about tonight. It is curriculum planning for English and math, and it's aligned with the Common Core. It gives us data and helps prepare our students for the Smart Balance Test in the spring. It allows us to use resources that we already have to help us teach the units. It's about eight units, and it gives us about 20 days to teach eight units, and it has an assessment for each unit. Now that we're kind of in the middle of the year and using this program, we found some problems with it. And I know that the district has spent a lot of money implementing this. It is really fast-paced. 20 days is a really short period of time to really allow students to grasp the concepts that are being taught. We were promised days to reteach, and it just seems like there's never that time. It doesn't even allow us to really get into a novel. It's really hard to teach a novel in the time that's allotted. So I'm like two weeks behind. The tests, there are eight tests throughout the year. And I've found that it takes about two days, on average, for my students to take the test. So that's about, well, 16 days out of our school year that's being used for testing. The tests are really long. They take a long time for the teachers to grade. One of the big problems we have at Lawrence Jones is the technology. We don't have the technology because the tests are supposed to be taken on the computer. And there isn't enough resources for us to do that. So we're having to hand score the tests. And there's a writing portion to it. And it takes me probably about 45 minutes to grade each class set of tests. So that's a lot of my time spent on grading the tests. It really takes away from the teacher's creativity when we're having to follow such a regimented pace. We wanted our district to look at our talented, passionate colleagues to help develop tests and assessments and curriculum instead of, you know, jumping into the deep end with this SINK solution and spending all this money on it and not really piloting it first. So it's something we wanted you guys to think about, and thank you for your time.
Yes, I'd like Mr. Steffen and Mr. Sarlot to come forward. There are some teachers that are going to share some great recognition from their sites. Mr. Steffen, come on.
Henry Sarlot, Assistant Principal, Rancho Cattati High School. First, tonight, I'd like to introduce the Rancho Cattati nominee for Educator of the Year in Region 1, and that is Betsy Moses. During the last two decades of service to our district, Betsy Moses has taught all levels of Spanish and freshman English at Rancho Cattati. She has incredible talent of getting to know her students, appreciating their personalities and talents, and having a natural way of managing the challenges that can occur in a room full of 30 teenagers with humor and sincerity. She has been the advisor for many clubs, most notably the National Honor Society and California Scholarship Federation and MECHA. Betsy has been a beginning teacher, support and assessment mentor many times, and has served as day-to-day support for the members of the World Language Department for the past 10 years, during which time she has seen colleagues through leaves of absence, family illnesses, and a myriad of other personal challenges. The department has had years of much change, and years in between, consistency, during all of which Betsy has led the department with an unwavering commitment to students. In the last few years, recognizing the real need for a Spanish heritage speaker course with a solid curriculum and real outcomes, Betsy has created a new course offering. Her endeavors resulted in a rich curriculum of language and literature. Betsy has also worked hard to ensure the proper placement of students to increase their likelihood of a successful academic experience. Betsy is famous for squeezing in visits to counselors and assistant principals to address specific student concerns and needs using any minute she finds in the course of a day. She can often be seen in her tennis shoes, trekking across campus at a rapid pace, and puts our younger educators to shame. Betsy seeks information and improvement through thought-provoking questions. She is determined and passionate about her work. She is a constant presence at student events outside of school. She was the biggest faculty supporter at our boys' soccer playoff games this year. She is, okay, sorry, I closed there. Her quiet, fierce dedication to students inspires all of those around her to greater heights of achievement. And I am fortunate to have called her a colleague for the past 15 years. Thank you, Betsy.
Well, thank you. And I too am very proud of having association with Betsy the last six years as I was the principal of Rancho Cattati. So I'm Bob Steffen, head of the Technology High School. And it's my honor to recognize for the same recognition Greg Weaver, who's representing Technology High School. So Greg, if you'd like to step forward here a little bit. I think that there are two significant characteristics of Technology High School that make this a real special recognition for Greg. One of them is that, of course, it's a fairly new school, 15 years in making. And Greg has been, nearly since its inception, I think he's been 13 years with us. And so made a significant contribution that I think it's fair to say that, or easy to say, that he has significantly impacted the lives of each and every one of our Technology High School graduates. I think the second characteristic that is really important to understand is that, being a small school, the significance of each individual teacher is magnified because of the impact that they have on each individual student in our school. And I think that, as I mentioned in my presentation last month at the educators, to the educators of Sonoma County, talked a little bit about Technology High School and the accolades that it has received over the 15 years of its history. Things like distinguished school, I think, three different times. And each and every one of our WASC accreditations have received secure accreditation periods, which is the maximum. There's other recognitions, but I think all of us know that recognition of that nature does not come by without professionally dedicated teachers. And Greg certainly fills that gap. He advises the robotics club with us, and that's equivalent to a head football coach or whatever you want to say in terms of the time and the effort that it takes to do that. And he gets paid a lot of money for that, so it's no problem. But he's also a science and engineering teacher. And, you know, in that, of course, that's the significant element that Technology High School offers our students is a unique look at science and engineering curriculum and helping them prepare for their futures. But I think his students will say that he teaches much more than science and engineering and robotics. He teaches them how to be young people who are aspiring, making great strides as they go through our high school and aspire for the future. So with that, I'd like you to join me in congratulating Greg Weaver.
I'm back. Now I have the great privilege to announce the recipient of the Bob Burton Spirit Award from Rancho Cattati High School, Ms. Jessica Holman. All right, Ms. Holman is the 2014-15 recipient of the Bob Burton Spirit Award. And this is presented by the California Association of Directors of Activities. This award is presented to a person who makes a positive difference, who emphasizes inclusion with all students and staff members. Jessica Holman makes school spirit work at Rancho Cattati High School by empowering her leadership students. She educates her student leaders about the ethics of inclusion and the importance of emphasizing tolerance and unity within our school culture. By starting with the need for this work and helping her leadership students identify the importance of school culture, she establishes a foundation of Rancho Cattati High School culture for the year ahead. Ms. Holman supports students as they dream big. She lets students set the agenda and the task while she mentors from the wings and quietly reminds students of their larger mission on campus. Ms. Holman strives to create a group of student leaders who reflect the diversity of our campus. And she involves marginalized students in decision-making and leadership. Ms. Holman embodies the qualities of a natural leader: positive, encouraging, empowering, and ethical. And she isn't too proud to do some crazy and incredible things for our rallies. Most reason would be her role as the wicked witch of the east or dancing about the gym in her penguin suit. Ms. Holman's joy and passion for school spirit is unrivaled, and she is the heart of student life at Rancho Cattati High School.
I'm Sixty. I'd like to welcome our city council members, Susan Harvey and Beth Dapco. Boy, I don't know how I followed that. A lot of good stuff. Good evening, members of the Cattati-Roner Park Unified School District. Oh, I'll let Beth have that. My name is Susan Harvey, and I am here as the Health Action Representative for the Cattati City Council. I want to thank you for allowing us the opportunity to share the portrait of Sonoma County with you this evening. I would like to thank Beth Dapco for giving the presentation this evening, and thank Gina Delforte, my counterpart on the Roner Park City Council, for being here with me to support this very important effort. Lastly, I'd like to thank Indy McKeon for her help in getting us before you this evening. Without her, we would not have been able to achieve this milestone. It is very difficult for us to shape our future without person knowing where we are today. So I believe that the portrait provides that picture of today, and it will show you the importance of education on every member of our community. With this information, we are better able to develop a path forward and to... With this information, we are better able to develop a path forward in achieving the health action vision of Sonoma County, being a healthy place to live, work, and play, and being a place where people thrive and achieve their life potential. Thank you for your time, and with that, I will let Beth walk you through the presentation, and of course Gina and I will be here if you have any questions. Thank you so much. So, good evening, and so this portrait of Sonoma County has, just, I'll try to be really brief, I know we have very limited time, but I wanted just to ask, have any of you heard of this before or seen a presentation of this before? Okay, so you're familiar folks. So basically, the portrait of Sonoma County examines disparities that exist in neighborhoods, so by place, and along the lines of race, ethnicity, and gender in Sonoma County. So I'm here to present the findings and specifically what they say about Cattati and Motor Park area, and then also to start a conversation and a dialogue about how the Cattati Motor Park Unified School District could actually strategically use this report to, as a tool, to really create more equity and opportunity. So first, there's a lot of research that shows the most significant impact we can have on individual and community health is to work on broad systems like housing, poverty, and education. So your work here in the school district is really impacting health, and we're talking health in the broadest sense of the word. And changing the context refers to making healthy choices the easy choice. So by creating environments that allow for exercise, connectedness, job accessibility, healthy environments in schools have many opportunities here as well. This report uses a human development approach, and human development is really about what ordinary people can do and be in their lives, about the opportunities that they have and the freedoms that they have to live to their full potential. So the report creates a human development index and scores each of Sonoma County's nineteen census tracts to really get us, give us a sense of what is happening in our communities. So the Human Development Index wasn't just created for this report, it was some, it's a gold standard index score that is used by the United Nations in over a hundred and sixty countries in the world. So how is it measured? There are three dimensions of the Human Development Index. Health, measured by life expectancy and birth; education, measured by educational degree attainment for adults aged twenty-five and over; and school enrollment for youth in the garden through twenty-four. And income is measured by median personal earnings. It's median earnings, so that millionaires, you can't throw the average off in any one census tract, and it's personal earnings, so we can also look at differences between women and men. Those dimensions are factored into index scores that factor that go between zero at the low end and ten at the high end, and those index scores are then averaged for an overall human development score, which again goes from zero to ten. The average for the United States is right around the middle at five point oh seven. California scores head slightly higher, and Sonoma County slightly higher than California average, forty-two. There are significant differences that exist across the racial and ethnic groups, and these, this is pretty much standard for the state of California as well as the nation. One piece of good news is that the gap between the highest and the lowest-ranked racial and ethnic groups is smaller in Sonoma County than it is in California as a nation, so that's positive, that still exists. Similarly, we see big differences by gender, even though women have longer lives and higher educational attainment overall, women in Sonoma County earn over eight thousand dollars less than their male counterparts. So within Sonoma County, we find many disparities by place as well. While Bennett Valley and Roseland Creek in Santa Rosa are only five miles apart, they have the highest and lowest Human Development Index scores, and this is quite a difference. Zooming into Cattati and the Motor Park area, I just gave you a sense of some of the differences that you'll see in these areas. The darker regions are the higher index scoring areas, and then the lighter regions are the lower regions. So there's a difference, the lowest in the Motor Park area is in the Motor Park A section, and one of the highest is in the Motor Park FH section. So what might cause some of these differences in the Human Development Index scores? Well, this is not an exhaustive comparison by any means, it shows some of the important social, economic, and environmental influences that the health outcomes in these two neighborhoods within Motor Park, and we see these influences reflected in the life expectancy difference of almost four years.
Could you go back to what's on?
Sure.
Let me understand the school enrollment, eighty-seven percent, seventy-six percent, what is that?
So this is school enrollment for youth, it's three, ages three to twenty-four, so it's broader than just elementary school or middle school, it goes up to age twenty-four. So this is from the American Community Survey, so it's reports from the census, the survey that goes along with the census, asking people, do you have children or youth in your home between the ages of three and twenty-four, and are they enrolled in school? So this is kind of, but it's a big enough sample where it's statistically significant.
Twenty-two, and I graduated from college and I have a job now, am I not in school? It makes that look worse, or?
Yes, but this is, again, this is, you know, kind of comparing, so, so overall, you know, it's a, it's a statistically significant, I guess, because it's a five-year average and it's a big enough pool, and it's just comparing by place, so, you know, they'll all be lower or they'll all be higher, so the age will kind of differ a little bit. Does that make sense? So diving into the three elements of the Human Development Score, the health, measured by life expectancy, education, I'll start with the health first, zooming in a little Over a decade separates the life expectancies of residents between the highest and the lowest census tracts in the county. The highest is in the central Bennett Valley area, and the low range is downtown Santa Rosa. The actual lowest is in Kenwood, but the Sonoma Developmental Center is located there. We're thinking that brings some of this, there is still over a decade of life expectancy difference in Sonoma County. Here in Motor Park, the Cattati area, we'll see, we can see some of the differences, the high is in the Motor Park H section, and the low is in downtown Cattati, very similar to Motor Park A section. And downtown Cattati is actually the eighty-ninth out of the ninety-nine census tracts in Lake Havre. One area that I think you can be very proud of for Cattati Motor Park is in teen smoking. So no conversation of health should go without mentioning smoking, and there are some recommendations in the portrait based on this. So despite recent advancements, smoking still remains the number-one cause of detrimental death in the United States, and we actually, as a county lab, behind the state overall, but actually Cattati Motor Park Unified does better than some, you know, than actually all of the other school districts, which is a place to. Moving to education, this shows, this map shows disparities in high school completion rates across the county. And at the top of the range, almost all adults in East Bennett Valley have completed high school, so this is high school completion for all adults aged twenty-five and over, while in Roseland Creek, nearly fifty percent do not complete or have not completed high I noticed here, there's actually some labeling issues here on the slide, but the actual, the numbers are correct for, so just regarding a little bit where this is pointing to, but you can see some of the differences in high school completion in Cattati Motor Park. While it's not as dramatic of a difference as there is in the county as a whole, there still are big differences between like the Motor Park A section at seventy-eight percent versus the Motor Park FH section, which is almost ninety-five percent. And some, these are some statistics that are also pulled with the, with the portrait of Sonoma County that look at some of the other data that kind of lead to high school graduation. So while in, we have, I guess in Cattati Motor Park School District, that's the second lowest on-time graduation for the county, there are some disparities in third-grade English language proficiency, fifty-one percent whites versus twenty-six percent Latino, and then in enrollment in preschool, so in public or private school, three and four year olds. Sonoma County has over ten thousand three- and four-year-olds, and there is licensed capacity for less than forty-five hundred of these children, leaving a likely unmet need, and this is just a little, it gives you a sense of why there's only forty-five percent of three- and four-year-olds enrolled in public or private school. And the county's actually exploring, based on some recommendations in the portrait, we will see some recommendations related to early childhood education, exploring what it would look like to actually cost out and create access to early childhood education for the entire county, so universal preschool. Moving to income, again, the report takes into account median personal earnings, so that we can compare women and men. The average, the median for the entire county is about thirty thousand dollars at the top in East Bennett Valley, and each person, individual earns, the median is almost sixty-nine thousand dollars, while the bottom is under twenty thousand dollars. And assets and wealth are not part of this analysis, so we know that the disparities are actually even greater than what we see on this map. In the Cattati Motor Park area, you can see some of the differences, while, and Motor Park, actually in the VCR section, we're thinking that a lot of this might have to do with the students from Sonoma State University, we're not thinking of a lot of income. The education index is actually much higher in that area, so that is much lower, we just wanted to point that out. There is a difference, it's pretty great difference, in some of the other areas as well. So the rising tide has not been lifting all boats. Over time, we can see that while our gross domestic product as a, as a country has been increasing by a hundred and twenty-three percent, median household income in that same amount of time has only increased about seven percent. And following national trends, one reason for the divide in income is the decline in mid-level job opportunities. The economy is becoming more and more in hourglass shape, and those in the lower-income jobs have less opportunities to climb runs to earn more. And in Sonoma County, we know that the service sector, agriculture, and tourism are all growing industries, but these are also largely lower-paying jobs. There were over twenty-one thousand five hundred students enrolled in the Sonoma County High Schools for the 2013-14 school year. There were about twelve thousand two hundred and eighty CTE slots, nine, about nine, nine thousand six hundred and sixty-five were CTE slots for STEM classes, the science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, and in this, in this analysis, we, the same student could have been enrolled in more than one CTE class, but we're just trying to figure out what are, what's that look like, is it reflecting the overall population? And there is a disparity between females and male students enrolling in CTE STEM classes and whites and Latinos. Overall, for the county, for K through twelve, there were forty-seven percent white students versus forty-two percent Latino students, and that's not quite reflected in the STEM classes. So that was one analysis that was very interesting, using the portrait.
Was that last slide, was that county-wide?
This is county-wide, yes, it's not for just the, your schedule. So the existing research shows that the health of the community is dependent upon a lot of factors, including a healthy physical environment, equitable economic environment, access and use of services, and accountable government. By focusing on some of these things, we can begin to craft the kind of approach we'll need to affect change. So this report, I want to kind of make sure I keep track of time here, we realize that we're just not, we're not meeting our full potential as a community, and there is a large opportunity gap, and the portrait really points to some actions that we can, guides us in ways that we could have a highest return on investment and to create more opportunities. So this Agenda for Action is not per se the county's Agenda for Action, or the Department of Health's Agenda for Action, or anyone, organization's Agenda, this is the research-based recommendations coming out of the portrait, but it gives us a sort of a starting point for thinking about how we can each create more opportunity. So there are population-based recommendations, so increasing access to quality preschool, redoubling smoking efforts, and also place-based recommendations, looking at where are the areas with the highest unmet potential, and what can we do to strengthen those areas. And thinking through opportunities for the Cattati Motor Park Unified School District, we're hoping that this report, it's not, it's not at any means a report from the Department of Health Services, this is a community-wide report, there were a group of about fifty stakeholders representing all different groups in the community, cross-sector groups, and we're here today to really say this, we're hoping that the school district will accept this as your report and put this in your toolbox of resources to be able to inform your decision-making forums, so hopefully this report can help you in your strategic planning, thinking through your local control funding decisions, potentially better understand the challenges of the students and families. One thought when we presented this to the Cattati City Council was that it might be interesting to, or a good outcome, to reconvene this two-by-two-by-two committee to really think through how to better collaborate to create more opportunities for all youth in the community. And just wanted to, again, say that, like I mentioned, that there were a number of individuals and organizations that helped create this report and are also helping, pledging to commit and use the report to create more equity in Sonoma County. So I wanted to recognize both council member Gina Delforte and council member Susan Harvey that are here tonight, and invite the school district, or you are welcome to be a pledge signer as well. So I thank you for your time, and this is the website, there's an interactive function on the website, you can hover over any census tract and get information, there's also some interactive map, it also has additional indicators on the website and data tables, and the report is available in English and Spanish, so I wanted to invite you to explore it a little further. And with that, I'd love to ask Jim, or do you have questions for council members?
Just a question about this year's college, is this being shared with the Cradle to Career group?
So Cradle to Career is definitely part of this, yes, as we see the formation as we do it.
Where can we find a copy of the book that is going around?
The hard copy? We're actually, we have limited copies left, but we're doing a reprint, so if you can just, just.
Or you can download the whole thing.
You can download anything, if you actually want, you know, a hard copy.
Or you can read it online.
You can read it online, and you can also, you know, be in touch with me, or maybe it's been me, and I can make sure you can get a copy. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
First of all, thank you for having us and for doing the report, but really, there's somebody in the room who was equally instrumental in speaking up for the school district here, and that is Elizabeth Kaufman, and she.
I haven't told them I'm going to meet those meetings.
She came to so many meetings and advocated, as did Jen Wilton, and advocated on behalf of Cattati and Motor Park, so much so that the Pedalima Health Center is going to be opening a health center in Motor Park, and because of the efforts of Jennifer Glutner, Elizabeth Kaufman, and Susan Harvey, the Board of Supervisors decided to front-end, or to actually back-end, a deficit of five hundred thousand dollars to open the health center. And the reason this is important is it's not only because it has fifteen dental chairs and then two doctors.
Mental health!
It also has a mental health component, which is incredibly. And so on behalf of these two cities, these four of us, along with other people, are working to get the supervisors to fund an additional six hundred thousand, so the center can open July first, and because of the work that everybody has done, they are also pushing for some kind of a clinic, possibly, because you all have to vote on it, to be contained of a clinic, possibly, because you all have to vote on it, to be contained at the high school, so there'd be mental health facilities for kids at the high school as well.
We're gonna take a five-minute recess.
To show the style of different cultures and the other activities to unite our school. Also, if anyone wants to come and join and sit in on any presentations, you're welcome to come anytime this week. It's that time of year again for students to start picking their classes for next year. To help them make their decisions on Friday, February 5th, at lunch was electives rush for people to see the different classes we offer at Rancho. Also, at this time, ASB held our commissioner rush, where each member showcased their position and handed out applications for next year. On Saturday, January 31st, Rancho's Athletic Boosters held the annual crab feed. It was held at the Burton Center and it was very successful with the help of parents, athletes, guests, and outside supporters. Altogether, this money was used to donate to the school sports teams. This year, Rancho participated in the first annual Battle of the Fans competition. Our Cougar Crew student section at games competed with other high schools in the county and league. In January, our ASB Cougar Crew leaders put together the final video of our cheering sections at games to submit to the contest. Although we did not win, our video got over 1,000 views on YouTube and it was a huge success in our community. If anyone wants to check it out, you can go on YouTube and search Rancho Catati High School Battle of the Fans 2015. Way back in October, our student body raised over $1,300 for the Breast Cancer Awareness Fund. So on January 29th, we gave our check to the Sutter Women's Health Center at break, which happened to be on our Pink Spirit Day, so that was cool. We wanted to thank our district and the maintenance workers for installing bulletin boards for a weekly Cougar calendar. Our woodshop and engineering classes also helped by making wooden signs for each day of the week. They are used to publicize events each day of the week and are especially helpful this week to display all the presentations for Unity Week. Our third blood drive of the year was last, or yeah, of the year was last Thursday, February 12th, and the last one is coming up in the spring. We had several classes participate in this year's Poetry Out Loud contest and the winner was senior Rachel Schaaf. Last week were the senior nights for wrestling and boys and girls basketball. Their seasons ended well and now spring sports are beginning with most tryouts being held last week. On signing day, February 4th, Rancho's very own Oscar Nava signed with Sacramento State for football. There was a ceremony for him at break to sign and an article about him in the newspaper, so that was exciting. Our junior class council was proud to recently announce the details for this year's prom. It will be held on April 25th at the Villa Santa Clara in Hillsburg. Any questions?
All right. February's really been focused primarily around helping the Ranert Park community. Tomorrow, one of our teachers, Dr. Joseph Emel and his biotechnology class will be doing a demonstration on DNA extraction at the La Tercera Elementary School in Petaluma. It must be from 6 to 8, so if you're interested, come check it out. Maybe bring your kids, see if they'll be interested in biotechnology. Really, it's just kind of to display what Tech High juniors and seniors are doing. This Friday, juniors and seniors will be reading to La Fiesta students at the San Diego State University Cooperage. This is being held by the Technology High School English Department and is focused primarily around aiding students, gauging further interest in literature and reading. The Tech High Debate Club, this is, I believe, their second year after being established. On January 24th, Naim Ayat and Benjamin Greaser went to San Ramon High School and they debated on public forum topics as demonstrated by the Student Congress from San Diego State University in conjunction with Stanford University. While they didn't place, they weren't recognized publicly for their knowledge on key topics, which is always, I guess, really cool. For the past several months, Linda Desatels has been coaching students for the American Math Competition, and earlier this week, the competition did take place with Douglas Deng taking eighth place, Curtis Shin in third, and Yuichi Makobi placing first place in the state. And finally, our robotics team is having a pasta feed on March 1st from 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. For those of you who are interested, tickets are available at techhighrobotics.com/pastafeed and can be redeemed at any point in the night. Additionally, a cake auction and silent auction will be running for the duration of the program. Thank you.
Okay, I want to talk about three events this last month. First one, I had the opportunity and also several board members were there also. We went to a county-sponsored dinner that was supposed to be an appreciating board member session, and our keynote speaker was Jesus Holmberg, if I pronounced that correctly. He's the new president of the CSBA. And what was really interesting about Jesus in his speech was, even though he's the first Hispanic director, and you're very proud of that type of thing, his focus was, you know, for all kids type of thing. And what I left there was two things. And then he talked about his district, Moreno Valley, you know, my school district with 36,000 students. And he talked about how they survived the downturn was that they had significant reserves. And if they hadn't had those reserves, they would have been in a whole bunch of trouble. So he talked about the value of reserves, but at the same time, he's trying to eliminate, you know, the higher reserve cast, which is a different thing. And then he talked about values of arts in the schools, and I totally support that with him, even though here he talks about athletics and arts, he basically talked about music that night and how it saves some kids through school and the value of that. So that was enlightening to meet him and talk to him a little bit afterwards and hear his perspective, just a genuine individual contributing a lot to education. Second thing, I met with the superintendent, our superintendent, the county superintendent and staff, and Mark Horlock was there talking about our qualified versus positive budget issue. And the key there to me is semantics. Did they relate? Yeah, they relate. You know, should we be rated this way or that way? For me, from a business standpoint, from a cash management standpoint, from someone that does forecasting, has done forecasting my whole life, a little bit different in different things is, you know, what money are you going to have in the bank to pay the bills and where your income was? So there were four items that they talked about that we talked about a little bit. I just want to recap those a little bit. One was retiree health was a cost of a million, two that they brought up that wasn't accounted for. An unknown, but hopefully unknown, is planning for additional students in that. So we're planning for 264 students, and I hope that's 364 students. But the conservative side of me, the financial side of me says, well, what happens if the 264 students don't show up? That's a million eight there type of thing. Two of the things they pointed out was that in our forecast, we didn't plan for additional staffing for those 264, but that may be just a model, the way we go about doing it. The last item was transportation money that we're not going to get, but there is a bill that's supposed to be, it's coming in September, I believe.
No, much sooner than that.
Much sooner than that? Okay, I thought I read.
It's already been chaptered.
Okay, so when is it going to get voted on? Okay, I thought, okay.
I have this item on the board agenda later.
Okay, so when that item comes, hopefully that money comes back. So, you know, I understand that the county's point of us being conservative and looking out, and we'll hear more about that, you know, later on in the meeting and then we'll hopefully. And then two is if the state provides us more money by March 15th, we can go from qualified to a positive thing. These are all unknown, so it's hard to forecast, is my point there. And I'm sure Anthony can vouch for that. You never know what day, what money's coming in, and to tell a story of the future is difficult. The last thing, and I know we're going to have a concert at the Wild Center coming up shortly, but I attended the Waldorf concert last week and, you know, our, and I play music all through school and I know how it's important type of thing. And what I saw, they have two, four, six, eight, nine schools play and come and perform, and they take music and they start kindergarteners. So when 20 kids, 25th graders walked out there with violins, I was expecting the same type of thing that we hear when our first kids go out there and they play their song and it's got like squeak, squeak, squeak. But, you know, that's the beginning, that's what happens. If you're a parent, I remember when I practiced, I don't know how my parents and my neighbors got along with how I squeaked and squatted, you know, but luckily they did. But what I saw was something that they start a lot sooner than we did. So those 25th graders, my mouth was hanging open after they played the version, their shaka, you know, and things, and I was like, wow, those are strings, you know? And for those, when I was in high school, we had an orchestra and we had a band, and I went to the band because orchestra was too hard. I was always amazed that people could play those string orchestras. So what I saw that night, and I'm sure I'll see when we go there, was an amazing performance, and I saw what happened when you start earlier and you have more in their programs. I see Jen nodding her head back there, she was there. I don't know if your husband teaches some of these kids, does some of the string stuff and all that. But there were two students there that I consider were prodigies. And I had a cousin that was a prodigy and played throughout the world and with the violin and various symphonies. But I saw that that night, and so that's just really amazing that you can give those opportunities for schools. The one girl plays currently with the San Francisco Symphony, and I thought she was an adult in the company. So, and then two, the venue was too. And then I have to commend one other student there from Credo, his voice, and the instrumentation there, the mics are just perfect, but this young lady had a voice that she's not on American Idol or goes from there on type of thing. And I'm sure we, you know, hopefully we can foster that in our kids and our programs to bring out the arts and bring out the music. So those are the three things I would like to touch on.
I had the opportunity to go to John Reed and observe their learning center last week. I got to, they didn't have any ELD groups, but they explained how those work and how they arrange that in the morning by grade level. And I got to observe a couple of walk-through groups, which were interesting. I also went to Credo last week and got an introduction to the Waldorf program. I hadn't had any background in that, so I met with Jafar Omar and Maria, who's here tonight, and were, was interested to see the way they work their classrooms and the way they teach and the engaging conversations that they have during lectures. Jennifer Wilkman and I went to Lawrence Jones Middle School and spent half the day there. We, Dr. Mason took us around and we got to see the piloted TV that we're doing in the classroom and the technology, and heard positive feedback from that. It was, the teachers liked it, the kids liked it, and it was fun to watch them do it on their iPads and have it appear on the screen. We also saw those at Hawn in the classrooms that we went to there the same day. And we, we had a, Jen Balogis' class, we had a question and answer time, so it was nice to meet the students and get to interact with them a little bit and answer their questions about what exactly it is we do and don't do and what we can control and what we don't control, and so that was.
They had great questions.
Yes, they had great questions for us. And while we were there, they were doing their Master's Art Design Program, which was interesting to see by grade levels what the kindergartners were expected to do and what the fifth graders were doing, and they all seemed to be enjoying it. They had parent volunteers in running those. They were all set up on parks and everybody was, every class that we went into were working on those. Jennifer Wilkman and I also went to the Masters in Governance Training Course down the peninsula. We spent the first day in an Effective Governance class and the second day in Human Resources and Global Bargaining. And I went to the Rancho Catati crab feed as well. It was my first introduction into that. I was shocked at how much people would pay for a cake. They raised a lot of money and it went to a good cost, so.
Mr. Jelardi. Yeah, it was a busy month, as Les said. We had a SCO recognition dinner, which was very nice to have trustees from around the county together. What we are lacking in this county is a county-wide trustees association that meets on a regular basis, and it's something that I would love to see back again because they did a lot of great things, a lot of great interaction, and they were the force behind the school week presentation, which should take place at Catati County, so hopefully something that'll get put back together again. I attended the facilities meeting, and a year from now, the school districts will look different. People are going to see what the future vision of this school district will look like with some new buildings, new facades, and, you know, people passed, you know, tax measures and they're actually going to see what's going to happen. There's going to be a lot of exciting things happening, so that's really, really neat. I attended the Career Technical Education meeting that was a joint meeting with our school district and the county office. For me, the best part about it was we know and we hear about what's happening in our district. What was great to hear is how the county uses what's happening at the ranch as an example for other school districts around the county of, you know, we are ahead of the curve, we're doing these things, we've modeled programs, and so other school districts around the county can look at us and say, this is how it's done, this is how it's done right, and this is what we need to do. So that was, that was great. And then Jennifer and I had a nice little walkthrough of some of the projects that are going out in the school district, which is really neat. Les mentioned concert. I was Saturday night at the concert at Wild Hall, and in the program was really great to see that on April 9th at 6 o'clock will be our district's turn at Wild Hall, so hopefully you all put it on your calendars. It was a great event last year, looking forward to it. Another event we've got coming up, March 28th, Education Foundation's Annual Big Fundraiser. They do a tremendous amount of work that goes directly to our teachers in our classrooms, and we definitely need to be supporting them. And finally, I was recently appointed to the Legislative Committee for the California Sports Association. We have our first meeting coming up, and I'm looking forward to doing that work.
I'll try not to repeat a lot of things that are already been said. I am, I got to spend a half a day at Rancho judging the Poetry Out Loud, and I was there, I was invited by Kirk Amos and former trustee Longmire judge as well. I'll tell you, it takes a lot of guts to get up in front of, I'm going to say probably about 300 kids in the auditorium there in two sessions to hammer out your poetry. Ms. Schaaf did a great job in winning, and a lot of the others were generally talented. What was impressive is, impressive is there was a lot of freshmen that also participated, so I was happy to do that. I went to the Cougar Boosters Crab Feed. I'd like to thank the president of the Booster Club, Nicole Leahy, for putting this together. The room's packed. I think the last I heard, they made over $12,000 and counting, so that's really a good, a good number for them. I think it's the most they've earned over the last couple of years, although I don't think they have a final number yet. And the cakes, some of those cakes, man, they were really selling. I never would have paid that much for a cake. I bought my cake first for Ian Buck. So I'd like to thank the committee under Nicole Leahy's leadership as the board president for Cougar Boosters, and they put on a great event. I went to numerous sports events, both Tech High Basketball and Rancho Basketball, both women and men. It's always good to see a good game, and I see improvement all around, especially with the Rancho girls. I think they're going to be a force in the next couple of years, so watch out. I spent the day with Tracy at Credo. I, on Monday, a week ago yesterday, we went to their board meeting and learned a lot about what's going on at Credo along with their budget and their recent audit. I'd like to thank Maria for putting their, who's here tonight, her president, for putting their minutes online. I requested that, and I think that there's a lot of good transparency that's going on there at this point. I also went on the school tour with superintendent Haley and Tracy, and I learned a lot during my tour there. It's good to see engagement in the classroom, and I just want to, you know, I know Maria's here and we'll hear from her later, but, you know, I want to thank her for inviting us over there. It was a time well spent, I think, you know, as we, as Credo moves forward, I think, you know, things are looking up for them. I attended the facilities committee meeting with Ed. You know, as we see facades change, I mean, I can't be more excited about the changes that are going to be happening. And Thomas Page, I think you're going to see those more quickly than anywhere else next year. I think the staff there has got to be like, I know it's going to take a lot of work to figure out where everyone's going to sit when we get started in late March, April, but, you know, next year, boy, it's going to be completely different. I think, I think everyone should be really excited about that. And let's see, lastly, I did attend the SCO meeting as Les has described. You know, I'll add something to that. You know, I think that it was a, it was a good discussion mostly about communication. I think that we all agreed that, you know, everything starts with communication. We really need to keep each other advised as to how things are going, and, you know, it's not the first time, you know, SCO hasn't agreed with our self-ranking, so, you know, it probably won't be the last. And I think as long as we're on the same page in communicating with each other, things get very, they get better, you know? I think that each group is committed to that communication, so.
With that, what president?
Trustee Wilkman? It's been a busy month. So I started out in the end of January. I attended Rancho Jump Start Orientation for Parents, learning about different things that will be happening for the incoming freshmen. Lots of great things were happening there. I attended my first meeting on a new committee that my board has put me on, the San Diego County Committee on School District Organization with SCO, and they had not had a meeting in two years, and now we're going to be meeting quarterly, so that would be quite interesting. I attended the Catati Ranert Park Council CTE meeting with many of the leaders in our district and got to hear about other things that's going on at each one of our sites. As Trustee Farrell had mentioned, her and I visited Hawn Elementary. We observed walk-through. We spoke to Shawna Whitestein and Michelle Talbot at Hawn and Amy Reekley at Lawrence Jones, who are all piloting the smart TVs. It was very, it was really cool to see all the new stuff that's happening with our technology. I also attended the crab feed for Rancho Catati. I attended the Ranert Park Chamber Luncheon to hear city manager Jared Jenkins and city manager Don Schwartz give a report on upcoming changes in Ranert Park. I also attended a bond facility meeting at Evergreen to hear what's going on with the new Kinder Zone and a presentation regarding the bond at Rancho Catati High School. Also attended with Mr. Farrell, or Trustee Jelardi, the CTE meeting with all of Rancho CTE leadership, and we got a tour of the auto shop and Holt Smith's.
The teardrop trailers.
Yeah, those are really cool. So lots of fun stuff happened over there. And also attended again the Masters in Governance classes with Trustee Farrell. And then last week, I attended John Reed Elementary with teachers from Helen Lehman and got to hear about the great opportunities for some of the students there with their learning center. So great things happening everywhere, lots of learning happening everywhere. It's very exciting.
Senator Chief Business Officials Report.
So we continue to talk to both cities about development of new housing. City Ventures, our potential buyer for the Kizer property, was perhaps a little more optimistic rather than realistic about how fast they would be able to go to the Ranert Park Planning Commission. They are still, so that did not happen, that will not be happening this month, but they are hopeful that they will go to planning in March. We will see. But they are getting going on their biological studies, so that is very important, and we're interested in seeing them continue to move. They're also working on hydrology, and as that progresses, we may be getting a proposal from them, having to do with where the detention basin would be. So I will report back as we learn more about what their specific request is. The treasurer's report's on the website, pretty much the same, similar interest rates to what we've been seeing. At some point, interest rates will go up, but we don't know when that's going to be. And I think that will stop there.
Senator Assistant Superintendent of Education Services Report.
So I just report briefly on special education. First, I have to, I feel like I'm at the Academy Awards, so some of you have thanked for helping me get through the last one. First of all, our county offices have been just tremendous. The both Selva and SCO staff have reached out. We were able to have a training just today from the program specialist through the Selva who came and talked about IEPs, and of course, the district special advisor Sarah Fountain and Monica Tong and Aki Shuman are always only a phone call away. So we've really been putting our heads together and looking out at our programs. And last week, Sarah and I met with all the, one of the fifth grade parents in the ED pilot program, and those are the children who are coming to Tech Middle School in Lawrence Jones next year, and really trying to look at what program operates we have in place, what we would like to cultivate for the future, what their wishes for their children are. And those were great meetings we've had, had specialists in psych and speech meetings, and will continue to do so, and just keep looking at how we can continue the innovation that the district has started, and hopefully continue to look at not only academic RTI or academic supports for students, but a tiered behavioral and hopefully some sort of mental health model that we can bring forward.
On marketing, on marketing, I would add, this month, we should be, well, this week, we should be finalizing our direct mail piece that we'll be having going out, targeting different areas, primarily Catati areas, Penduro areas, and then some postal routes to the north of us and perhaps to the west over towards Hillcrest. We're working with the U.S. Postal Service. They have a methodology that's actually very cost-effective for us. Our printing costs are relatively low, and then our postage costs are relatively low by doing a lot of the work ourselves, giving it to the post office, and then they just drop it at every door. So it's actually a pretty cost-effective way to do it.
Not the door, but the mailroom?
Well, the mailroom, yes.
And, you know, if I get after that, Rob, I mean, I think it's important to, you know, pat everyone on the back that's been involved in the marketing, because as we've, as we've read, you know, West County enrollment's down, Petaluma enrollment's down, and guess whose enrollment's up? And I think that's an important thing to talk about, is, you know, we've done a good job in marketing, we've increased our enrollment, and, you know, with increased enrollment comes more money. And I want to thank you guys for doing what I consider you owe us a job, you owe us work.
Thank you. At some point, maybe March or April, we'll give a kind of a thorough report as we did last year and all the different pieces and share them again and update you.
Thank you.
I added the next item to the agenda relatively late, and some, most of the rest of the things I'm going to talk about, people have already mentioned, but I wanted to put John Reed Learning Center on here. Not that we don't have great staff everywhere in the district, but I wanted to single up too. Tonight, we were invited by the principal, along with other school trustees and different people were able to come at different points in the morning, but I was there at the orientation time. And I was really struck with the professionalism of two of our staff members, the principal Susan Lopez and Ed Specialist Sandy Bartholomew. I was in awe of their understanding of their school, their students, their pro- I, I was in awe of their understanding of their school, their students, their program, their ability to explain it to other teachers. I, I was truly in awe and I just, when you see something like that, you really go, wow, that, those are professionals. That's the word that just kept coming to my mind was how much they understood their craft and were passionate about it, and that's something I'll have to see. So I see you, Susan, and please share that with Sammy and I as well personally. And then I could go ditto for number three. I would say ask to create a new committee. Trusty Gerlody and Jelardi are on the committee and really we want to explore and make sure we're operating the best career technical education programs that we can. Our district coordinator is Mr. Stephan, who may have gone back to the R section tonight where he'll expect a long, long life. He put together a joint meeting that included our CTE teachers, all of them who could be there because some of them are coaching and doing other things. And again, I was just in awe of these people really, they understand their classes, they know what they want to do with students, they're constantly learning themselves, and I think it really shone through their level of professionalism. I appreciated the support of Stephen Jackson and his staff from the county. So again, I think it was just a meeting where you go into some people who really understand their craft, are professional, they know what they want to do, they're passionate about it, and that's what we love to see. And I also am looking forward to the athletic and sports pathway being added to Ranch Katati High School and seeing how they can put that together.
Something that I did mention, which I think is important, the funding used to come from the state to the county to the schools, and with the new funding formula, the county doesn't have the funding for career technical education. So what they are doing now is they are providing the expertise and support services for programs that are, you know, being developed or are developing schools. And that's where we're really ahead of the game because we have a lot of great programs going where other schools are starting to get those up and running. You know, we had it when there was a different funding formula and now we've got it, the program's in place, but we've got the support services coming from the county to help, you know, with this, this sports pathway, which is a new program that we're working on. So it's, it's, we're in a really good position compared to a lot of other school districts in the county.
There are, there are districts dismantling their CTE programs and I think they're going in the wrong direction. I, we're singling people out. I would definitely like to single out Bob Stephan. As I mentioned, he coordinates it for the district. He's done it for years. He really understands it and believes in it, does a lot of work behind the scenes. Sonoma County Office of Education, as I said, is a great partner and because a lot of the funding's going away, they've worked together to, we have a lot of different grants going on. Dr. Kaufman was with us, contributed to that, and Baron puts a lot of time into that. And so it's a good team effort between our school district and the county. It's a good model. And now I did tell her that it would be relatively near the beginning of the meeting. To echo, we did have a great visit at Credo High School. I've been there a little while, so it was good to see so much going on at the different grade levels and ask Maria Martinez if she'd like to come and rest the board and give an update.
Good evening, Dr. Haley and trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about the great things that are happening at Credo. Live at Credo looks a little bit different from the last time I stood up here. Thank goodness. We are serving 139 students. We all have four, all four grades now at high school, with seniors slated to graduate on June 6th, and we will send out an invitation to the board to join our first graduation. Many of our seniors have submitted their applications and they are receiving acceptance letters from colleges, so they're all excited to see their next steps. Since I was last here, Credo's received Wasker accreditation and all our A through E and G courses have received university approval. Course descriptions for our F classes have been submitted and we anticipate their approval as well. Our annual audit's been finalized with no findings and the need, the need for a reserve was brought up and that will be addressed with a solid financial plan as enrollment continues to grow. Our second interim budget is being prepared with a projection to end the year in black. Startup debt will be nearing its end with payments accounted for in subsequent budgets. Enrollment is ongoing and we received a record 95 applications for our freshman class with 85 accepting spots. We plan to have a minimum of 80 students in our freshman class for 15, 16, with a possibility of 90 will be in three cohorts. Applications for other grades have also been received. Response from our feeder schools, which is something that we had initially hoped for, has increased and it was only one freshman applicant is from the Katati Warner Park School District. You know, that was a concern before. We've received over $10,000 in grants and our funding, fundraising committee has already exceeded its goal for this year. On February 10th, we welcomed Rob and Tracy and Mark for a brief meeting in classroom tour, affording the opportunity to see the world of education in action. We are proud to showcase our amazing students and appreciate very much your time and perspective. Given where we were a year and a half ago, I much prefer our current situation and I think, thank the board and the district for your continued sponsorship. I look forward to the teamwork necessary to maintain our mutually beneficial relationship in the future as along with you, we focus on the learning of the students, providing the successful education they are entitled to, as is your mission. Thank you very much.
Yes.
I attended many, many, many events and they were all great and participated in the great pig pie.
Item 18 sent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve items A through I?
I will approve, we approve the consent agenda, item A through I?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Motion carries? Item 10, personnel services. Can I get a motion to approve personal action report 1415 dash 7A certificated?
I'll second.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Motion carries? 10B, can I get a motion to approve personal action report 1415 dash 19 classified? Can I get a second?
Okay.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Motion carries? Item 11, business and operations services.
This is the item we promised you you would see again, so we start with the public hearing, which you'll need to open and then hearing comment and then close and then the end. It's very important.
Open? Anyone want to make a comment? Double click, close.
And again, this has been the East End tour, the word alongside Rob.
Can I get a motion to adopt resolution 1415 dash 19 in the matter of the convenience of the East End and Roll Call pay for utilities?
So move.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Trusty Brown?
Yes.
Trusty Farrell?
Yes.
Trusty Gerlody?
Yes.
Trusty Orloff?
Yes.
Trusty Liston?
Yes.
The trees have come down.
I was gonna say, before we go, let us see, I drove down Snyder Day and, and then later when I was here.
What a different view.
Well, I, I actually didn't know, I mean, there's still a lot of trees, so it's unfortunate, but.
Well, 60 is a lot of trees, so can't do it all in a week.
Drive down Snyder doesn't differ.
On Ranger. Okay. Item 11C, approval of request for allowance of attendance because of emergency conditions. Can I get, can I get a motion?
I move we approve the request for allowance of attendance because of emergency conditions.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Action, sorry, roll call.
Is there a roll call?
Roll call, yeah. Motion carries?
Item number one, we have on page 35 in the packet, the letter we received from Warner Park Katati Educators Association for comments about tonight, so that's sunshine is the term used of public, oh, sorry.
I do have one speaker. You have a card, please. Me again, same address. So as I mentioned earlier, I've noticed it's had sad trend in our district with teachers feeling overwhelming sense of failure and defeat. As I mentioned as well, we were told to give tests that we as educational professionals know are only going to cause damage to our students' confidence. We're being required to use programs with little or no training. We are expected to piece together from old materials the curriculum we are to teach to achieve our goals with the new Common Core standards, which we haven't even had time to truly understand what the learning is supposed to look like. We're working harder, working longer, and working faster than ever before and getting recognized less for our unending efforts, not only by the public, but by our leaders as well. Our salary, which hasn't risen in six and a half years, is the biggest, most direct reflection of the lack of acknowledgement we crave and deserve. We are asked daily to perform impossible tasks, which we do willingly and happily if it means improving education for our students. That is the job of a teacher, a miracle worker, making things happen without the tools, time, or training required. I used to feel frustrated with teachers for this bend over backwards, anything for the kids approach to their job. It allows them to be pushed and pushed and pushed. I want teachers to say to Sam and say, no, what you're asking from me is unreasonable and it's not what I signed up for. Now I feel sad that we can't say no, because it's the only thing we would say. All tasks are unreasonable and not what we signed up for. But I also feel proud of the staff I work with across the district who are still willing to say yes to power through and to find a way. These professionals entered this job to impart their love of learning. They want to see these little souls, their students, learn, succeed, and to be just as eager to learn as the teacher in front of the room. What they want to teach is a love of learning. Teaching young souls to love learning is not a skill a person can learn in a credential program or even through experience. It's innate, it's a talent, and it's being squashed. None of us who chose to go into teaching as a profession had any misconceptions about making noodles of money. We knew we put in more hours than the eight to three Monday through Friday. We knew we'd lie awake at night trying to come up with a new way to teach fractions that would be earth-shattering. We knew we'd carry our students' burdens home each night at the end of the day. And we knew we'd be financially undervalued, a national epidemic. However, I doubt if any one of us thought we'd have postgraduate degrees and have to work odd jobs after our full-time jobs. I started teaching 11 years ago and I got a job waiting tables to have some extra fun money. I figured it would be just for a short while before I made enough in my real profession to not need the extra income. And at first it was extra income only. Then we agreed to help our district and took pay cuts to the tune of $15,000 over three years, and that extra money became necessary. Now, as a mother, a homeowner, and a full-time teacher making less than I did six and a half years ago, I have to teach tutor after school and I have to work at a gym twice a week. There is no fun money. That monthly extra income means a week of groceries for my family. And I'm not the only teacher who does this. We all, a lot of us have extra jobs after school, whether we're new teachers or seasoned. Teachers are sacrificing time with their families to do so, and it's time to pay these professionals as professionals. Five times now, we've heard a public promise from our administration and the board to provide a raise for our teachers. Now is the time to show the teachers just how important their job is. Thanks. Toby?
Okay. 12A1 too. We did have a meeting with some kind of superintendent of schools and he brought along his deputy superintendent, Jim Serrato. I thought it was a great meeting. I thought they, they had an opportunity to share what they were thinking and what their point of view was. We had an opportunity to share ours. I think it was constructive. Of all of the items discussed, I think I gained a better understanding of at least the Deputy Serrato's thinking about enrollment. And I think he got an understanding of ours, differentiating between enrollment in a multi-year projection and what's actually going on in an operating budget. You know, without rehashing everything that was, you know, discussed at our, our last board meeting, you know, we've had a qualified or negative budget certification for just about every certification since the beginning of 2008, '09. And actually, as mentioned earlier by Trusty Orloff, had the county change our certification for us, and none of that was new. What was of concern really was that communication. And so I think we tightened that up a bit and I know that the deputy superintendent and his staff are already committed to working with our district and with CBO Baron. I would anticipate what we put forward as our second interim report, we have their input beforehand and whether or not we're positive or qualified, I think either way, we want to make sure that we're on the same page. And if we're not, we'll clearly show upfront how we're not on the same page, but I'm anticipating that as a problem. A lot has changed. Again, I think that got a little bit lost last month already between the end of first interim report, which is October 31, and certainly now, and also between the time that the first interim report is put forward to the board for a vote. We've heard about what's going on at the state level, improved funding at the state level, and that works to the benefit of the district and some other changes as well. Local year being able to account for some revenue that went, you know, we had expenditures in the first interim report, we didn't have all the revenue in the first interim report, so a lot, a lot can be corrected at second interim report, and that's what the interim reports are for. You know, to make adjustments throughout the year, change perspective throughout the year based on new information. There is a certain amount of forecasting that has to go into it. We're asked to have a current operating year budget that we adjust if we need to and two more out years where we look at what we think is going to happen. We were asked to make assumptions and, and so we did. I don't know if Trusty Brown, if we want to add anymore to the meeting, but again, I thought this overall was pretty constructive.
Part of the concern is knowing what the state's doing and our hands are kind of tied until we find out. There's all this press about additional funds, and should like to know what those additional funds are.
Well, we know it's, it's what we've learned. First of all, one of the ways that we're able to develop, I think, good assumptions is by staying active statewide. You know, it's, you have Trusty Gerlody, who's been very active within CSBA. All of you as trustees make it a habit to go to meetings, the dinners that we've heard, hear different speakers. Myself as superintendent, I attend a lot of meetings. I listen to a lot of people that have, you know, more experience than I have. We go to school services presentations, we go to capital advisors presentations, and all of that is designed so that we kind of have a pretty good understanding of what, what the future goals for education in California and what, what the funding trends are. It's been shared before that this is probably one of the strongest governors we've had in a long, long time, just in terms of the political power that he has. And so it's kind of changed the, the way we used to perceive the state rolling out its budget. We, we used to learn very, very little in January, you know, it was pie in the sky, maybe some big overall direction that I might support, and then there would be the May revision that would come out that would have a lot more information, a lot more details. And then prior to Prop 25, you know, they could adopt a budget whenever they felt by getting to it. Well, that's all changed now, especially under Governor Brown. What he says in January, you can almost bet that's what's gonna happen. There may be some details change, but that's, that's gonna probably happen and the May revise is taking on less importance. And then of course we have budget adoption down June, or the legislature doesn't get paid. But then a new phenomenon, which is, well, we passed the budget, but the details and trailer bills aren't gonna come until later. You know, but, but come June, we'll have to pass and adopt the budget for 2015, '16, and we'll have to make projections for 2016, '17, and 2017, '18. With that, you know, our second interim report planning, I've already mentioned, we have already guidance documents that we've worked through with. have already guidance documents that we worked through with Sedoma County Office of Education. We'll be working on that and updating some of these revenue expenditure items for you at least in March. Questions about that? And then 2015-16, we'll see in a moment when we get to one of our subsequent items. When we adopt our 2015-16 budget, the out year 17-18 starts to look different depending upon what happens with Measure D. And so we'll have to at least disclose the possibility of the loss of that funding in As already mentioned, Creole High School, we've posted their audit, and we understand that. Don't have any updated information on six and seven. Cover those more at future meeting, other than what we'll hear from just briefly. And in moment, is it a packet? Any questions or comments?
We've got one topographical error on that. At the bottom, month-to-month difference in enrollment. We've got 131, 2015, 1231, 2015. That should be 14, I'm pretty sure, from December 31st. Yes. We go from year to year, it's hard to check.
Ah, the old, what year are we in?
It's a similar mistake, but better that couldn't get paid. We could have topped it all yearly.
Ah, it's been paid. We have an ongoing process led by Dr. Copeland to review our local control accountability plan and...
The process is out of control.
Say it once.
We will be continuing, I met with a gentleman named Bill Kuzma, who is Dr. Sandy Kuzma, the Lawrence Jones interim principal. And also, excited. And he's looking over our plan. He's going to give me some ideas perhaps about simplifying the process. He did this for a living in his prior district, which I believe is Newark.
Fremont.
Fremont, I don't remember where it was. And so looking forward to his feedback and some ideas for next steps. I think I'm going to be reaching out to school site council and PTA members to join the LCAP committee, because that's a group that needs to be strengthened. And we have our meeting, we're having a retreat on March 10th with our bargaining units to look at the plan and where we are today and suggestions for the future. And yeah, about as far as I am, and I should probably calendar some dates to coordinate the plan.
One thing you'll notice, any more comments on 12B? We did separate out the fiscal facilities. Sometimes, you know, we have this standing item, which I think has been very helpful, considering how many facility projects we're going to have over the next few years, having just a separate standing item to talk about those seems to make sense. So we have the new 12B. Under 12B, the first thing I would mention is that we now have the first date for our first Citizens Bond Oversight Committee meeting, which will be March 24. And that committee will meet at least quarterly, and we'll set the calendar. They'll meet in the same, well, the same evening as our existing Measure D Citizens Oversight Committee. Some members will sit on both, some because of their status as employees can't sit on the Citizens Bond or something. The role is basically the same. We share what our expenditure plans are, we share facility projects that we're working on, you know, and that committee's job is to ensure that they're consistent with the language that we presented to the votes. The Facilities Committee did meet. That committee's been great and had a good commitment, promised some staff and community members to stay involved with that. I think our meeting process for that is about every other month, and keeping that committee informed is what we're going on, getting their ideas. It's a good dialogue, and that's where we do have two trustees sitting with us. And then if you look on page 38, I don't have any visuals tonight, perhaps next month, but this has been a heavy workload month for moving these projects forward. We've had a lot of meetings, both with the design team, which is the district architect and the builder, and then going out to the sites and meeting with principals and teachers to make sure we can translate the plans into actual construction documents. At Thomas Page Academy, as was mentioned, it's going to go through extensive retrofit of the campus in general. One of the classroom buildings, top to bottom, several of the other classroom buildings, some work done on, a lot of site work for landscaping and ADA access improvements, and then two new classroom buildings that will allow us to eliminate all of the portables that are on that campus. Some of the portables, most of the portables will be demolished or sold off, and three of them will be repurposed in other parts of the school district. That work will begin shortly, and I want to thank, I don't know if she's here tonight, but Teresa Peterson, who's been an active member of our...
She wasn't here.
An active member of our Facilities Committee, and then as a principal, I think both the architect and the contractor have been very impressed with her ability to stay on top of things and keep them born and available to work on the turf to make sure that we keep the campus moving, student life moving, teaching moving, and at the same time start construction. And so that will begin in March. And Ranch O'Time High School, again, we've had a lot of what we call programming meetings, where we make sure that how we're designing the buildings and the improvements match what the teaching and the curriculum might be inside those spaces. Have had some great feedback from different departments. We have, the high school put together, I guess, a subcommittee or a working group that's met several times to give us feedback, and actually has resulted in changes. The experimental building really truly became an experimental building. We've put all kinds of stuff on that, different materials, different paints, different treatments, and it's really given us some way to test out some of these different approaches. At this point, I think with the exterior modernization work, we've got all the materials down now, we know what we're going to use, we know how we're going to put them together. So that work will be commencing, it may commence earlier where we can, but mostly that'll be a summer 2015 project. What we're now calling the TAG Building, theater, academics, and gymnasium, or you can just call it a multi-use building, that's still on track for fall of 2017. And so we're moving along with the, what was option one, but it's had a lot of design changes within it, but the basic footprint would be the same. So there'll be part of the building a large one-story, part of the building a two-story, with at least six classrooms on the second floor. We have a meeting coming up next week, another program in Point 6, another programming meeting for that building. And then I did mention the tree room, so that's begun. Evergreen Elementary, what we have committed to so far for the summer of 2015 is the Kinder Zone, and actually the plans to that are pretty far along. Again, we met with site staff, had a great meeting with the kindergarten teachers there, and I think they're pretty excited about what they're going to see. We're also looking at shade, more shade structures on the campus, but other parts of the campus, we're not ready to move forward because we just don't have a clear pathway to make sure that what we're doing, we'd rather get it right than rushing. And so we know we have issues with the classroom pods, we know we have issues in the office. We originally thought we could make some modest office improvements by the start of next school year, but after having a meeting at the site and putting in some thinking to it, we've been sharing, and this has always been a project that we were not sure we could get done by August of 2015, but I think we need to put that on hold at least for some time, you know, so we really know that we have a good design and we know what we're going to get done. We'll also have a great opportunity with Thomas Page and the first phase of Ranch O'Time. We get through that and go from designs to actual numbers, we'll know where we're at budget-wise as well, and that'll guide what we can get accomplished around the district. And then really with the rest of the list, we have some minor projects that may take place this summer on different campuses, but those will be the major ones. A particular concern here, and we'll go back, flip the page back to page 37, would be Thomas Page Tech Community's Technology Middle School, and making sure that we have enough classroom space here next year. And also returning parts of the campus that have been taken over by district functions back to the school. So we now let CBO Baron talk a little bit about moving maintenance off of this campus so we can get some of those spaces back.
So the good news is the economy's getting better. The bad news is there's not a lot of space available for rent within the district's boundaries. So in terms of space that would be suitable for our maintenance operation, we're really looking back at Martin Avenue where we used to be, if that's about all vacant space there is. So we right now are negotiating with that potential landlord. Realistically, the amount of space we need, because not only do we have to move maintenance, we also need to move some of our food service storage, so we're looking at a pretty sizable space, maybe on the order of 8,000 to 10,000 square feet, and probably realistically, it's going to run us about $100,000 a year, give or take, a little more, a little less. We're looking at a five-year lease, because we think it will be that long before we could make another plan for more permanent housing. Obviously, we're not really interested in paying rent forever, although we did pay rent, rent on Martin for quite a long period of time. But given all the other projects that we have to do, building something on existing district property would be always out there. So I expect that we'll have something to report back to the board at the next meeting that will finalize negotiations. We do need to get moving in order to get the work going here this summer, so.
Couple of the critical areas that will be able to return to student usage, if people haven't visited the site, but there's a mini-gym that we would like to return to student usage, and then next to it, a shop that we will turn into an engineering lab and rely on the work that Cole has done over at Ranch O'Time High School, the kind of guy that we want to do in there, and that'll also be that area in between the multi-use room and those two facilities to better have students flow through there. So along that, along with some more classroom space here, what will be to do? What we'll do next with the methodology that we've been following, which continues to just work great, same architect and contractors working together, we had about a three-hour meeting today where we got down into a lot of the details of finishes and how things are going to come together. Actually, we were then joined by Jeff DiPetti, who's the owner of JLM, which is Jeff DiPetti Modular's, Sedoma County entrepreneur, and I was very impressed with him today. So he was sitting there as well, hammering out all the details. And this is all work now being done upfront that in a more traditional design bid build process happens after you start construction, and people get upset and change orders, so to see it all dealt with upfront is great. The next phase would be, we have pre-construction agreements for those three sites going from pre-construction agreements to guaranteed maximum price agreements that should be pretty rock solid, makes it on all those that we've done. We continue to work on our Prop 39 plan, which has been a model statewide, and if shifted that around with passage of Measure D, we could use our Prop 39 in different ways and improve our efficiency.
Where do we get the money yet, something? I don't know that I told you that. It's really, because it's been like, okay, we're approved, we're approved, we're cashed, and the payment for last year for this year is coming in March, so.
Any other questions?
The fees for the architect, what, I think it was like a million nine, what did that cover?
The, it's a percentage.
I know it's a percentage, but I mean, where are we, is it just for these projects? Or a portion of these projects?
We have agreements with the architect and the contractor for Thomas Page, Ranch O'Time, and Evergreen.
Okay.
Correct, we're separate agreements.
I saw that payment was large, and I realized that architects do, you know, contribute, and their fees are up there, so.
Having been immersed in this for quite some time, the amount of work that's going on is, you can't imagine. I mean, we had three architects, three representatives of the contractor here today, like I said, Jeff DiPetti joined us, and we had two staff members, and they spent a lot of time working together out of the sites, doing drawings. Anybody who wants to visit my office and see all the drawings and the boards and the renditions? And a lot of it is, well, part of it is the state and what we're required to do with the state of California and the vision of state architecture. The fees are, the soft cost for school construction is huge. Unfortunately, that's just the way it is. Any other questions?
12C. Welcome, Charles. We're doing the approval agreement for TBWV Strategies to conduct a feasibility study for renewal of Measure D parcel tax. Welcome, Charles.
Thank you. Good evening. How quickly time flies, we'll write it in front. It seems like this yesterday that we were celebrating the approval of Measure D, and here we are, it's already time to start thinking about the process that will hopefully lead us to a successful renewal and extension of Measure D. So tonight, what I thought I would do is start by providing a little refresher on Measure D, the specifics of the measure, the timeline that we're on until it expires, and then look at some issues we would want to think about as we approach the potential renewal of a parcel tax. And then I've also laid out a timeline and some potential next steps to think about as we move forward towards a potential renewal. So first of all, the refresher on Measure D. Measure D was shorthand. The official name of the measure was the Catatia River Park Quality Teacher and Academic Instruction Preservation Measure. It was an $89 parcel tax with a specific duration of five years. It generates approximately $1.2 million per year in locally controlled funding that the state cannot take away. That's one of the big selling points and advantages of parcel tax revenues, the state can't take those funds, and it's stable and predictable. There are exemptions available for seniors age 65 and over, and I know that some seniors have opted to take advantage of that, as well as low-income residents and disabilities. There were fiscal accountability requirements built into Measure D, including an independent Citizens Oversight Committee and annual audits. And any of you who were involved in the Measure D process and watching the votes come in for the several weeks after Election Day that it took to finally resolve the outcome may remember the Measure D was approved by 66.9% of the voters on June 5, 2012. These measures require a 66.7 approval threshold, so we won, albeit narrowly. And the funding from that measure, unless renewed by two-thirds of voters, will expire in 2016-2017, at the end of that fiscal year. A little detail on the use of Measure D funds. One of the other nice advantages of the parcel tax measures, the revenue that flows from the tax can be used for any purpose within the district, so unlike bond funds, which can only be used for facilities, technology, equipment, and furnishings, these bonds are available for any use. The only limitations are those that you self-impose when you write the language of the measure. So the list here is the list of programs that were specifically outlined in Measure D approved by voters as potential uses of funds. Now, as we look ahead at the potential for the renewal of Measure D, first of all, the renewal requires a two-thirds vote, just like the initial approval of the measure.
Yes, it does.
For emphasis, Dr. Hader. For emphasis, Dr. Haley.
I was just gonna, in keeping with the evening, that is an area where we forecasted and unfortunately got it wrong. I know we were hoping that, and there was a lot of talk about it, that the state would lower the threshold for passing parcel taxes from 66.23 down to 55%, like bonds. Unfortunately, that just seemed to fall off the state radar, and I felt that the government around, he just wasn't that interested in it. If he's not interested in it, then it's probably not going to happen. So it's really hard to get 66.7.
True, true. These are very tough elections, and we'll talk in a minute about how we factor the difficulty of passing these two-thirds measure into our planning timeline and how we think about approaching the renewal. And as for the reduction to 55% passage threshold, each year for at least the last decade, there has been a state constitutional amendment introduced in the state legislature, it has failed to get the votes necessary in order to go to the statewide ballot. So it's a two-step process, which is why we don't believe that in the near term, within the life of your current Measure D, we're going to see a reduction in the threshold. Because first, the legislature has to vote, put it on ballot, that step hasn't happened yet, and then the voters statewide would have to approve that constitutional amendment or the threshold. So our reality, at least in the next few years, is that it's going to still require a two-thirds vote. The renewal of the parcel tax measure offers an opportunity for us to revisit the specific terms of the measure. So as we, as voters adopt a new measure, we can choose whether or not we want to adjust the tax rate, if we want to adjust the use of funds. We're in a different economic environment, a different school funding environment than we were in 2012. That may motivate some changes. We can look at a different duration, we can revisit the exemptions and the accountability provision. So it's an opportunity to look at what worked over the preceding term of the tax and look at whatever adjustments might be necessary. Now, an important strategic idea, and this gets to the difficulty in passing two-thirds measures, is that the process that we've seen work well for districts is that in order to avoid a disruption in funding, right, this parcel tax funding has been built into your budget now, and, you know, the school district relies on it, to ensure that that funding's not interrupted, we advise districts not to wait till the last possible moment before the expiration of the tax in order to put a measure forward to voters. There are specific dates in each calendar year when state law allows us to put parcel tax measures on the ballot. If you wait until right before the expiration of the measure, and you come up 50 votes short, well, it can be six months or more before you can get the measure on the ballot and then back on tax bills before you're collecting revenue again, and that oftentimes can result in a full fiscal year's loss of revenue. So we factor that into our planning horizon and try to look for election dates that allow us, if we should fall short narrowly, to come back and have a second bite at the apple. So we'll talk about that when we get into the timeline. As we, as the process that we've used leading up to the successful Measure D parcel tax, the bond measure that was approved last year, all these decisions should be informed, not just by us taking our best guess at what's appropriate, but by doing some thorough opinion research in the community, assess voters' attitudes towards how the Measure D experience has gone, you know, to the extent that they understand what an integral part of that funding means to your budget, and how they feel about a measure going forward, given the changes in the economic environment and whatnot. There may be a different threshold for taxes in the community today than existed when we did the research back in 2012. And just a reminder about the two distinct phases in this process. The school district can coordinate and fund the process of preparing the measure for the ballot, conducting community research that informs the preparation of that measure for the ballot. But once the board calls for an election and you have a measure that goes for the ballot, any advocacy related to the passage of the measure has to be coordinated and funded by an independent campaign committee. That's the process we've used for the parcel tax and the bond, and it will hold true for the renewal of parcel tax as well. So as we look at the available election dates for a potential parcel tax renewal, there are some dates available to us over the remainder of 2015, there are some dates in 2016, and there are some dates in very early 2017 that would allow us to renew the measure before the funding expires. As we look at those dates, there are pros and cons associated with any number of those election dates. As we think about the 2017 opportunities, the problem there is you're right up against the expiration, and to become up short, you're going to face a year without parcel tax revenue altogether. When we look at 2016, there are a variety of complications, largely due to the fact that it's going to be one of those exceptional political years, right? The first half of the year is going to be dominated by an open primary process with both parties and open Senate seat here in California, the litany of statewide initiatives that are going to be on the ballot. It creates an unpredictable environment. I'm not saying that we couldn't get to two-thirds in that environment, but there are some factors beyond our control there that we would need to take into consideration. There's also an option later this year, November 2015, when we could put a parcel tax renewal on the ballot, we wouldn't be competing with those same kind of state and national issues, and it might provide a more predictable environment. So for the purposes of planning, we've put together a timeline that keeps that November 2015 option on the table. So we would conduct the polling, do some of the early community outreach to test the waters, so to speak, and see if that option makes sense. We can always fall back to a later date if we want to, but if we don't get going with this renewal process soon, we will, we won't have that option available to us. So looking at what this timeline might look like, over the next few months, we would recommend that, one, there's some early communication to the community to report out on what you've done with Measure D dollars, make sure people understand what the parcel tax has done to date. Also, provide an update on the current state of the district's budget, so people have some context. Once we've informed and educated the voters about some of those issues, conduct our feasibility study, that's where we do some polling in order to assess the voters' willingness to support a parcel tax. And then we would propose to come back to you at your April 21st meeting with the results of that outreach and the polling, and make a recommendation on whether or not we think this November 2015 election date is optimal for you, or if we should be looking at a planning timeline that puts us towards one of those 2016 election dates. Assuming that it is green light, we see that it's all systems go for a 2015 renewal election, then we would go through the steps that we have with your past measures, starting to build consensus in the community around this measure that would go to the ballot, building the measure, working with your legal counsel and others to bring back a resolution for your adoption. And then we've tentatively targeted the July 21st board meeting for when we could actually bring that parcel tax renewal resolution to you. So this is all tentative pending the research that we're going to conduct, but this is a potential timeline. And then the advocacy campaign would obviously unfold in the months leading up to November 2015. So I won't go through this in detail, but I've laid out the key dates here that you all can, can look through. Essentially, we would be using March to do some of the outreach and polling. April is largely analyzing the poll results and coming back to you with recommendations. May and June would be actually developing the language of the measure, July bring it back to the board, so that we meet the August 7th deadline to qualify for the November 2015 ballot, and then transition to the advocacy campaign, if that's the direction that we're going. So that's the process and timeline we would recommend, and happy to answer any questions you have.
So, two questions, obviously, if I'm back to staff. The first funding is funded out of bond to, to support this, our bond funds, to support the survey and that, or just where? Where's that money coming from?
The unstructured general fund.
General fund.
Just as before.
Okay, so general fund, so.
Same for both Measure D and Measure B.
Okay, so transparency, roughly $30,000 for the survey, and four or five months or three, four months of your service?
Before on this timeline, it would be five, five and a half months of service, which carries through the image block.
So we're looking at $60,000, $70,000 to the general. Correct?
There's some choices to make on the survey, but sure, I'd rather err on the high side than the low side.
And does that include mailers too, or not? That's just the survey and?
There's a mailer. One of the things that we've done with the mailers is we've really incorporated them to our, we're all marketing campaigns, so there's a mailing cost in them.
And so you say with degree of certainty, obviously, November 15th is probably the less, one of the least impacted votes coming up, you know, with the presidential, the following year, and you say Senate and stuff. So you can control, or at least you know who's going to vote a little bit better to target that type of thing. So I have to agree that in the scientific statistics of who votes and who doesn't, and who we target to vote and that kind of stuff, that's probably our best shot. If you miss that, it's going to be difficult getting at any of elections preceding that. And then it'll be interesting to see how the sentiment about people that right now are paying two bonds and parcel tax too, to see how they, I hope they support it, but I'm just interested to hear that. So are you going to be asking questions? How do we find that out if people are concerned? Kind of like people, I don't pay two bond and one parcel, you know?
Well, generally, these surveys are structured such that there's a battery of questions focused on sort of general perceptions of the district, where we'll get a sense that people think things are going in the right direction in terms of, you know, the job you're doing educating students, the job you're doing managing finances, you know, kind of gauge the general perceptions of the district. Then we dig into the specifics of a potential parcel tax measure, you know, rate, duration, you know, program priorities, those kinds of details. And then the latter part of the survey simulates how support changes when voters are exposed to a potential campaign environment, whether they'll hear positive arguments and negative arguments. And, you know, one of those negative arguments may be, you know, wow, we're already paying a parcel tax and two bonds, and see how much that, that information.
I don't think we have a negative campaign out there, I'm just hearing bits and pieces from those people that don't have kids anymore.
Sure.
So, and last time, I don't think we were forced, there wasn't any taxpayers association coming out, you know, confronting that, it's just getting those people that will vote for this out to vote.
Sure.
About two-tenths of a percent.
And actually, too, is that seniors can't file for an exemption, which they can't do on the bond, but they can use their parcel tax.
I have to file. I'm still paying my taxes.
It is auction.
Trustee Brad, you made a great point, I think shouldn't have to minimize, which is something that we've talked about a lot, which is the attractiveness of that November date.
You missed that?
Well, in all likelihood, there's nothing else, so we have a built-in advantage, you know, the home team advantage, we've done Measure D, we've done Measure B, and so we know who our likely voters are, we can calibrate that. And if there's nothing else on the ballot, now our job is just to get them out to vote. We don't care what it feels does. So that, that's a huge, huge advantage to that November date, which is, is why Charles is standing here today.
So if you do that election, it doesn't go into effect until the other one's expired? We're not going to piggyback it on top of it, right?
There would certainly be no double taxation, but oftentimes, what districts will do is write the new measure to replace the old measure. So once voters approve this measure, the old one goes away and this one replaces it. And the reason for that is that, you know, if you go out and campaign on this new measure and whatever adjustments we're making for it, it's harder then voters to wait, you know, a year, a year and a half before they see that go into effect. So you have an expectation-setting problem. So it's tend to work better that, okay, voters voted on that, those are the new terms, they go into effect immediately.
So if I understand it right, does the other parcel get shorter then?
It just goes away. It goes, it goes away prematurely, right?
So we don't get the full five years, and then, so strategy-wise, you go for seven years?
You could. I mean, that's something we can look at with the duration.
You could, you could, and 10 under polling, and what, what people.
Charles, did you, did you advise Peddle One?
On the parcel tax?
Yeah, so they, they went through this process a few years ago, and that's one of the things that, that we can test and weigh out, which is, I believe the choice they made was to keep the dollar amount the same.
Right.
And either extend it, or do they make it permanent?
They made it, they made it permanent.
Right, so keeping it all amount, so there's like, a lot of different choices that we can make, you know, rather than like, try to get a much higher dollar amount, just stay the same, and say, now we know we can count on this funding.
Yep.
Is that one of the questions you're going to ask about making it permanent?
Yes, yes, we can. I mean, we haven't started the survey drafting, but, you know, like we have in the past, we'll sit down and look at all the issues we want to test, and that can certainly be one of the items listed. You know, as Dr. Haley suggests, there's usually a trade-off between more money or more time, and that's sort of a policy issue that you all need to think about, which is a higher value, and then we'll see what the voters prioritize.
It'd be nice, I mean, because we know that we're going to have to also then again go out for additional bond funding to continue the projects that we want to do. So after a while, the community's going to go, wait a minute, it's like every two years you're coming back. So it'd be nice if, if we could work towards getting this one at a permanent rate, so we don't have to keep going out all the time for that, and then we could focus on, on the other.
Sure, permanent or even a longer duration. If you could get eight to 10 years, that would buy you some time until you're backing up for another renewal. So, yeah, we can look at all that.
And I, I would assume with the additional parcels coming into our area, that that is also an indicator, or that some you're going to study as to how much you might ask for? I mean, we're looking at how many more parcels in, I mean.
Well, we don't really know, because some of the new developments, it's Homestead's Association, so maybe fewer parcels than the number of homes.
I mean, we know there's potentially, what, 300 homes this year? So that's at least 300 additional parcels, which.
Well, 300 homes, but they wouldn't hit the rolls themselves.
They might, they might thought, oh, people won't be living and paying taxes. I mean, it's.
Yeah, exactly. We did a little bit of research, I don't know. If it becomes a parcel.
Before it becomes a.
It's recorded, so.
Why, I thought, I asked a question, I don't know, what, a year ago maybe, and I thought a parcel is once it's parceled out, not necessarily with a home on it. So there's a difference between the bond and the parcel. So we can't collect bond money until we have a notice of completion and an owner, I think. But, I mean, for the bond, right, we can't collect bond money.
No, they're, they're already, the bond, because it's based on the assessed valuation of the land.
Well, yeah, but that'll be separate parceled out, so separate bond.
Well, what'll happen is the, the value of that land will greatly increase once there's a house on it.
Yeah.
I know we got the answer, we did, they, I know we'd have to go back, and I don't, I, I remember you asking, when does.
Because I was like, when's a parcel a parcel?
I remember the answer.
I thought a parcel becomes a parcel before it becomes a home, so I thought.
Yeah, that is what I would.
Okay. So in essence, we collect money quicker on a parcel than we do on a.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. If we can get an accurate projection of parcel counts by year, then we can look at what different rates we generate in those years, and factor that into what range of rates we want to be testing.
Okay. And I don't, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't move forward November, I don't think, I think it wouldn't be prudent to wait, I think we need to.
Wait.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to move forward with this work.
Can I get a motion?
I move that the board approve the agreement with TBWB Strategies to conduct feasibility study for the renewal of the Measure D parcel tax.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
I get the.
I am, I'm, I get a motion. I move that we, as a board, vote for Representative Diana McDonald, so CSBA's delegate assembly. I hope she's the incumbent, and she's the only, oh, wait, she's not the incumbent, she's the only person. Yeah, so it's either we vote for her or we vote for nobody, and I, I've met Diana, because she's been a good one to do her job.
Yeah, I, I agree, she's going to, she knows what she's doing, she's been involved with PTA up at the Sacramento area, and she's very involved, and I look forward to working with her on the delegates, so I'd be more happy to second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
She'll certainly be a voice.
She's certainly, she's also the new.
She will liven up our meetings, and I look forward to it, it'll be fun.
She's the new state president for PTA as well. Okay, item 12E, acceptance had gifts and donation to score, score school food. Let's see, from Monavista, we received $20 from an anonymous donor, we received $50 from Mr. and Mrs. P. Boy. At Orange Jones, we've received from Wells Fargo, $253, for a total of $353. Can I get a, I'll just take a second.
Will we have to give some donation to the schools in the district?
Can I get a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? No? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody. Oh.
Yeah, I'd like to get some information as far as student teachers, what, I know we work with Sedona State, we used to work with Dominican, do we still work with Dominican? How many students, teachers do we have in this system? And then with the development of University Elementary, we're, there was going to be some buy of Sedona State with their teaching program at the school site, and I'd kind of like to get an update on what's going on over there.
Sure, can you do that? You'll have that for us?
All right. Thanks, everybody, for coming to our meeting tonight.